Mac, are these for, Mac, are these for us?
They are.
Okay.
That bluff book, or the hole in the rock book?
The rock book?
Yeah, I brought those in for you.
I'm taking shot to Kevin last night. He was reading and resting.
Oh, really? I'll bet.
When he comes.
Yeah, I've got a C D on it.
Do you?
Yeah, so it has the C D. You can take one of them.
Okay.
If you want, so they sent two of them. There's nobody else here. Two participants.
The, um, next broadband meetings can be Blaine.
Yeah, yeah. You're, you're hosting. You're hosting it, so you gotta... You'll have to welcome everybody to San Juan County. And so the council delegate Daniels.
Herman?
Yeah, coordinating everything there. Sent him an email and asked him if he needed any help from us. He hasn't responded. And so he may have it all. But they have us listed as co-sponsors.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll be a good meeting. Other than that, we're ready to go.
Okay.
Are you ready, Lyman?
We...
Okay.
Everybody's ready?
Yeah, we are ready.
We'll call the meeting to order at this time. Time is, um, eleven oh two A M. I believe we have a court. I heard, um, Commissioner Mary Boye on the line. There's no line, huh?
Yeah.
Airline.
Yeah, airline, yep.
Mr. Adams is here in my shop. So we will go ahead and proceed with the, uh, proposed agenda as to be read into the records, uh, at this time.
Okay. On here, under the consent.
Invocation.
Invocation.
I said last time, but I'll say it again if you want to.
We will honor that.
Our dear Father, we're grateful we can gather for this commission meeting. Those in the audience and those in leadership and, and there'll be good discussion. People will be good to each other and it will build to record these events and go forward in our county government. In this we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Okay, thank you. Now the reading of the proposed agenda.
All right, so under consent agenda items, we have the approval of the March first commission meeting minutes. Approval of check registers for March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Item number three, approval of four thousand nine hundred seventy-three dollars and forty cents in small purchases. Got one thousand three hundred sixty-four point forty for PVC pipe, um, for track control fence down at landfill. Two thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars versus edge update. Um, which is a diagnostics program, uh, for the road department. One thousand one hundred and eleven dollars for marketing material, economic development, visitor services. Under item number four, approval of nomination of Robert A. Berry and Charlie M. Tracy for reappointment to the Conservation District Board. Item five, approval of aging fourth year of the San Juan County Aging and Adults Four-Year Plan. This is a consecutive plan that you've seen for the last three years. This is the final fourth year of that plan. Item number six, approval of additional rural grant funds approved by the Community Economic Development Board to be distributed to the grant recipients awarded funding by, and this is under consent. And so on, item seven, approval of San Juan County Health Department S T D Disease Intervention Services twenty nineteen. Amendment number three. Then improvement of, or approval of amendment one memorandum of understanding between Utah Department of Technology Services and San Juan County Public Health for the Vaccinate Utah, uh, Computer Program System. Under business action items, we've got nine. Um, item number nine, consideration and approval of G I S Planning License Agreement. This hosted software, this will be, uh, presented by Elaine or maybe her staff. She may be out today. Item number ten, consideration and approval of nine thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars purchase of software for endpoint security. This will be by Trey Versor, our I T director. Item number eleven, consideration and approval of a resolution to the Utah Transportation Commission requesting it prioritize funding for a feasibility and environmental review for the safe transportation route between El Jado and Navajo Mountain. Um, this will be Commissioner Gray Eyes item. Item number twelve, consideration and approval of a resolution of the San Juan County Board of Commissioners expressing gratitude and appreciation for U S Congressman John Curtis and his Senior Legislative Assistant Brian M. Fahy with assisting San Juan County in obtaining five hundred and twenty thousand dollars in federal funds for ongoing cancer screening for victims of the Monticello Mail Superfund Site Operations. Under public hearing, we have a public hearing. Item number thirteen, which is a request to rezone, uh, for Catherine Lima, San Juan County, the San Juan Estates Phase Three, Lot Twenty-Five, and this will be presented by Scott Burton, our planning director. Under the community reinvestment area, item fourteen, we had consideration approval of tax increment participation agreement between bluff dwellings and the Community Reinvestment Agency of San Juan County. Asking for that to be tabled in the agreement. That, um, originally that participation agreement was supposed to be a San Juan County, um, the Health District and the Water Conservancy Board, they're all three tax, um, districts of San Juan County. We had learned from the Health District that they no longer want to participate in that tax increment project area. We haven't heard back from the Water Conservancy District. And so we'll table that item so we can work out those details to see if we can get everybody back on board with that project, but you'll see that at the next commission, hopefully. Other than that, commissioners, is your agenda for today?
No executive session.
Oh, executive session, yes, at the end, we still have that after commission reports.
Motion.
Mister Mary Boye motion to adopt. Ezra. Motion and second by?
Second.
Mister. Mister Adams. Any question, change, add deletion? If there's none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye also. Oppose me? If be none, motion cares, three in favor, zero opposed. We go next to public comment.
Okay, public comments limited to three minutes apiece on public comments. There is a public hearing portion of the meeting, so if you're here for the public hearing, we'll have that a little bit later with the, the rezone request. Um, this one here is just primarily for public comments. Like I mentioned, three minutes apiece, be, please be courteous and kind in your comments if you're wishing to make a public comment. Typically, I will take those audience members here, if you're wishing to sign up for a public comment, there's a list. Right here, I'll zoom in for you. No, it's my fault, I should have zoomed in earlier. So we're right here. So if there's somebody wanting to make a public comment, go ahead and sign in and then we'll reach those members uh, of the meeting online after that. Let me check, see if there's anybody. Well Doug, if you're it, looks like we've got Doug Allen, just please state your name, where you live within the county and we'll proceed from there.
Doug Allen from Monticello. I just wanna give thanks to the county administration and commissioners for their help in, in, uh, item twelve. And in obtaining five hundred and twenty thousand dollars for cancer screen for Monticello citizens. As you may or may not know, we had this project for several years and I think we had in the past with the commissioner's help, the Commissioner Adams' help and, um, city of Monticello, we were able to get about eight hundred and something thousand and it's dried up. And so this is really a, a good thing to have because we, we definitely had some people come to the cancer screenings and find out that they did have cancer that they didn't know of, that probably saved some lives. So just a real shout out of thanks to, to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Adams, you gotta develop a pill. Invent it.
Invent a pill that, you don't have to do the screenings anymore, huh?
Yep.
I agree, takes it all away.
Well, we, we probably already have it, but we don't use it.
Yeah. It's herbal. Tobacco, is that what you're thinking? Yeah, prayer, absolutely. Everything, huh? That's a hard one.
That's important too.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. Looks like we have staff online other than Liz. Liz, if you wanna make a public comment, we're at that portion of the meeting. Not seeing anyone unmute themselves.
Okay.
That's your public comment period for today.
Thank you. Relating to, uh, comment made, uh, Mister Ellen. Reference to what are the action item? What's the, uh, updated information on the, the mill blending?
The blending mill?
Yeah.
With Energy Fuels?
Right.
I'll set up a meeting with Energy Fuels. Their, um, their president is coming into town. And so I know it's not on the agenda here, but, um, we'll get a tour and then meet with the C E O on there so we can get an update on what's going on and you can ask questions.
Yeah.
And so hear this spring as we'll set it up. And so.
A wedding.
Get everybody out there.
About it and see if they have, uh, stopped the seed pitch.
Yeah, we can ask them.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. With that, we will continue on the, uh, consent items. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Back in.
Any question?
I had, I had one question and maybe for Mac or let me see if I can find it.
Sir Adams?
It's on the bills.
Check registers?
The check register, let me find it. I'm old, so it might take me five minutes. There was a payment for Classic Air Care LLC for eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Hmm. What page are you looking at?
That's on, uh, page thirteen. You find it, thirteen.
Oh.
This is twenty-three.
Sorry. I was looking at the wrong, the middle page.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. My goodness, thirteen, right?
That's what it says on mine.
Okay. So Classic Air Care LLC from the sheriff, San Juan County Sheriff, put that in as medical expense. I'll have to check with the sheriff and see.
That's a huge payment without much explanation.
Yeah, yeah.
I've, I'm not sure I wanna make an approval of that particular one without at least getting some kind of information.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Information before we, we probably always sent the check.
Yeah, let's table, we can table, pull the check registers off of the consent item, table that. And then, um, I can have them back on the next commission.
I know there was a couple of other big ones.
An exclamation.
On that next sheet, there was a fifty-nine thousand dollar payment to E F T P S slash I R S.
Yeah, there are taxes, so you got Medicare tax, federal income tax, social security tax payments. We tried to give a description, although the description is pretty, pretty limited on that one.
Didn't see it. Uh, anytime I see those.
Yeah, the one single item.
Fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollar payments.
I would too.
Kinda think maybe we ought to look at them, I mean, at least discuss them.
Yeah, yep.
And then Lyman, I guess you're spending a lot of money on elections, right?
We're starting, yes.
With Nichols and Company, Nicholas, is that? No, that's aging.
Nicholas is our food company.
Okay, that's the aging.
They provide our meals.
Uh, let's see. What's this payment to Willie Gray Eyes for ten thousand dollars?
He's expensive.
I know, he's.
He travels the world, wants reimbursed.
Come on, Willie. Okay. Do you read, who reviews the U S Bank Court payments? Is that, is that yours?
Yeah, so all the credit cards come into the individual departments, they code them and then I review them before we sign off on them with Megan.
We paid sixty-one thousand dollars to the Utah Retirement Systems.
Yeah, sweet.
We wanna make sure we keep up on our payments to the Utah Retirement System.
Retirement is important for a lot of our staff.
We don't wanna get behind.
No, not at all.
Get penalties.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty bad mojo when you get. But yeah, I'd recommend just.
Just making sure we make our Utah Retirement System payments, you know?
Yes. That is critical.
Okay. With that, I would, uh, I would just like to bring back the eighty-nine thousand dollar one and have a discussion about it.
Okay. All we need is just to... Well, you've got, Kenneth is online.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's here. And then Commissioner Adams is the vice chair. So following suit.
Will, Kenneth's online somewhere.
So you have a comment?
Hey. You make the decision. I'm okay with it, yeah, anything cheaper.
Yeah, if we just get a motion to pull that from the consent agenda and table that item and then approve.
Kenneth, I'll make a motion that we approve all the payments except the eighty-nine thousand dollar one. And we'll get an explanation on that, are you okay with that?
Okay.
You wanna second that?
Yeah, yeah, let's, 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 let's see.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right.
Most things approved. And then approval for
Okay.
A motion for your consent agenda items.
So we, we had a motion and a second on the consent agenda items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, and Willie had to step out, so, um, two in favor. Should we go on to number nine?
Yeah.
Number nine, consideration and approval of the G I S Planning License Agreement Hosted Software. Is Elaine or somebody from her department here? Online?
I don't see her here. She had to run it to the doctor's office, but.
Let's get number nine and go to number ten.
I can, I can go through that real fast.
You want to?
We can, yeah, yeah, just on the summary in your packet. We've been trying hard to, to get a summary, summary in here just in case somebody like this is out. And so on here, the G I S planning provides the geographic so, scope of software that will cover the geographic boundaries of San Juan County, Utah, supporting economic development. Uh, G I S provides detailed information about San Juan County total population, AIDS distribution, population growth, education attainment, labor force, talent, business and jobs, income, spending and housing, owners and versus renders. For me, when I look at, um, cities and counties, you typically have a toolbox of things that you can offer businesses. This G I S software will offer that to individuals who are looking to come to San Juan County and open a business or those that have a business, you'll be able to, to figure out the demographics here within San Juan County and apply your business goals for those demographics to try to, try to, to get more money. Um, or position your business to, to take advantage of, you know, say, for example, if our population is middle-aged population and that's who you wanna target as a business, the demographics and information from this G I S planning will give them that information. So it's a toolbox that businesses will be able to use. We, um, are constantly working with E D C U, so the Economic Development Corporation of Utah up north. Uh, they'll typically send us out, um, companies that are looking for properties in specific demographics. With this information, we'll be able to communicate back to E D C U or companies like that as they recruit businesses into the state of Utah. We can tell them, hey, we do have a, a population here of, in potential employees. So, um, with our property of availability in certain areas throughout the county, then we can connect with these owners to move businesses into San Juan County. So this just gives us another tool in our toolbox to, to help explain and describe what we have available here in San Juan County. Yeah, planning. Yep. So that's what this tool represents, it's three thousand six hundred dollars a year for the three years that locks in the price to avoid any price increases. Um, they'll pay for this just out of their, their grant funding that they've received in their budget.
Okay, apparently if, um, Elaine and her staff feel like this is something they'd wanna do to, to improve their office, I'll make a motion to approve.
Still on first page.
Item number nine.
There's a motion made by Mister Adams to approve number nine. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Second by Mister Mary Boye. Any further question? They're being done, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose me? Three in favor, zero opposed, motion cares?
Okay, the next one on here is consideration and approval of a nine thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollar purchase of software for endpoint security.
Okay, as you guys know, I've been trying to improve our network and our security here in the county. Um, this is for virus and firewall protection for all of the Windows PCs, Mac PCs, uh, Android or iPhone devices. Um, I've, uh, set on ESET protection as the software that we're looking to use. I've had a trial version of the software running on our network. It's only about twenty-five devices that I've been able to use. Um, I've got a server right now that is infected and has been mining, uh, cryptocurrency for somebody. So, uh, I've used this software to clean it up, but we need to continue that, uh, going on. Otherwise, they're using county resources to make money. So the current systems that we have, Windows Defender, it's not, um, not enough for current today's, uh, security. So I've got a couple quotes here, I've tried a couple different options. Carbon Black was an option that I went with, was looking at, but their prices were just too high. And I tried a couple different, uh, purchasing companies to try to see if I couldn't get the price of the software down. The cheapest one that I found was G H A Technologies. Um, they're able to get us about two hundred and fifty licenses and then also they gave us the option to be able to have somebody, install the software to make sure that we're secure, that we're, we've got all the proper settings. Um, and this will be paid for with a grant that Tammy has. Um, it's a ten thousand dollar grant that we will be getting every year. And then the quote that I got there is for a three-year license. So we're hoping to be able to use the grant this year to purchase this endpoint security. And then next year, we're gonna use it towards the backup solution, um, because we're gonna be getting, it's a, um, Homeland Security Grant. Uh, we've already been approved for.
Motion.
All right, I'll second it with a comment or a question.
Motion made by Mister Mary Boye, second by Mister Adams, Mister Adams?
I know we've had a couple of incidents where we feel like we've been breached. So, and I know we've spent a lot of money on technology in the past couple of years. Do you think this, this, uh, technology that we're purchasing here will take care of what we need or is there gonna be other technologies that we'll need beyond this?
I don't foresee anything right at the moment. Most of what we've got is pretty secure. I've just gotta go through and be able to set more rules to secure things down, so it's more or less a time, my time to be able to do that. So I don't foresee anything in the near future, but technology's always changing, so.
Is this something that you consider cybersecurity?
It is.
Hundred percent.
So, um, have you talked to U C I P about, uh, the cybersecurity policy that we purchased from them?
I am not.
I wonder if that would be something that would be valuable, Mac, to just run this by by U C I P and make sure it's something that they're comfortable with insuring.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And I, I, I really kinda don't know what I'm talking about, as you can tell.
Okay.
But I do know some of the key words, cybersecurity and insurance and.
Yeah, yeah, this is a cybersecurity grant from Homeland Security that we're using, so yeah.
Well.
We can run it by them.
I just think it might, uh, be good for you to contact U C I P and tell them what you're doing and ask them if, you know, ask them if they have any suggestions or any input, probably more than anything.
Yeah, I just need to get some contact information and then I can.
Yeah, we can talk to, we can talk to Johnny.
He does what I do.
On there.
Uh, with that, I'd, um, I feel all right. Um, I feel alright about this, Commissioner Adams.
Thank you. With that, uh. No further comment? Call for the question, uh. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed eh? Three favors, zero opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
When, when will this, when will this be installed and we'll be safe?
I'm hoping as soon as possible, to be honest. Uh, like I said, I've got a trial version that I've had to extend a couple of times. Um, just so that we have the coverage, but I'm hoping to get this ASAP because we do have that server that is infected.
So if they were mining on our server, do they leave the coinage behind?
I wish. Cause we're paying for the power and the, the resources of hardware.
Yeah.
And they're making money.
Yeah.
Free and clear.
And I think that's what's scary is the ransomware now that's out there. Um, you know, Clearfield City got hit last year pretty hard. With that, and I, and I think that goes and falls in line, Commissioner Adams, with what you had mentioned with USIP is making sure that. These steps that we make are preventative in nature. Um, and don't get us into a situation that will cost us more.
So when they mine, do they live Bitcoin change?
That's what I was hoping, yeah. Bitp- Bitcoin tailings or something.
If I were advanced enough, I'd be able to.
It's crazy.
Well, good job, Trey. You're doing good.
Yeah. Alright, item number eleven is the. Consideration and approval of a resolution to the Utah Transportation Commission requesting its prioritize. Funding for a feasibility and environmental review for a safe transportation route between El Jado and Navajo Mountain.
Yeah. This is the uh. I think last meeting I reported that the uh. Legislation. Legislature decided to just go ahead and give the money to uh, UDOT. And uh. This is just uh. Supported in terms of. Hopefully for their. Selection on the project and to fund this for uh, environmental impact studies. Mr. Adams?
So last uh, commission meeting, you mentioned that it had gone down. UDOT, so I got ahold of Senator Hinckins who.
Yeah.
Who um, had made the request on behalf of, of the county, um. And he said at the last minute, they did give the money to UDOT. My only fear is UDOT might think the road from El Jado to Navajo Mountain is in Utah County. And, you know, they have a hard time understanding that there's. Things.
They can't see over the mountain.
Well, they can't see over the mountain. So I think this is an appropriate request. Of uh, the Transportation Commission to let them know that. First of all, let them know that we know they got the money from the legislature. And we know what the money was designated to do. And so we're asking them to follow up and spend the money. As it was, as it was appropriated in San Juan County, not in. One of the counties up north. So, good job, Willie.
Thank you. Hope it comes through.
Yeah.
I do too.
Open the. The, the water. That the floods come in.
Let it come.
So with that. Motion?
I made a motion.
Oh. Mr. Adams stole my pen.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Who's Adam? There's no further question, uh. All those in favor say aye.
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 I also. Oppose eh?
Motion on number twelve as well.
Uh, motion carries on number eleven, three favors, zero opposed, number eleven. Or twelve, I mean, we're down to twelve.
Mac.
So number twelve is.
Motion on number twelve.
Let's have him present it first, please.
Okay, this one here is the resolution of San Juan County Board of Commissioners expressing our gratitude and appreciation for U.S. Congressman. John Curtis and his senior legislative assistant, Brian M. Farhi. With assisting San Juan County in obtaining five hundred and twenty thousand dollars in federal funds for ongoing cancer screening for victims of the Monticello Mill Superfund. Site operations, kind of as was stated in the, the public comments is there, there was a loss of these funds. Uh, when Congressman Curtis was downtown, he met with um. Steve Young, uh, a member of the Monticello victims of mill telling's exposure. They started that group here in Monticello. Saw funding from uh, previous senators, had, had the appropriation from. Um, the United States federal government in the past, um, and then just through transition, that money was given back. Uh, so we made another appropriation request with the assistance of Congressman Curtis's staff and so. We just wanted to thank them, but it also acknowledgement um, that we do have that five hundred and twenty thousand dollars for. Um, cancer screening. They don't have to be, and this is kind of the unique thing with it, uh, they don't necessarily have to be residents of Monticello. And so we've got some marketing to do because if, if they've lived here and were affected by the mill telling's operation here. In Monticello, um, and can point back to that, whether they live, you know, back in New York or wherever the case is. That cancer screening can, can take place and be paid for um, through here. And so we'll set this, this program up with um. Our Public Health Department, uh, where part of it, you know, is, we'll pay for transportation. So if there's somebody that's elderly and needs. Transportation here to the clinic, then we can go pick them up. And all of that is paid for through this, this grant process and so. Little bit of marketing that we have to do, but um, we're certainly appreciative of, of the funds to get this back and going. Uh, kind of like was mentioned, um, any, anytime you can get pre-cancer or cancer screening. Um, before it, it seriously sets in, and there's the savings that is direct benefit to, to this program. And, and we've seen it time and time again here in the past, where kind of like was mentioned is, they were, people will go in and get screened. Um, and then find that, find out that they do have cancer in the early stages and are able to, to get it taken care of before the onset. Um, other than that, Commissioner, that's kind of the overall picture of what we've got here.
Mr. Adams?
So the five hundred and twenty thousand, that goes directly to our uh, county health department.
Yeah, we'll.
Ministered.
Yeah, we'll put it in the, the Public Health Department to administer.
And then um. If they don't get a screening done in San Juan County, you say they can still. Have a screening in another county that can be paid for out of this.
We'll reimburse them. Yeah, that's, that was significant as well, where residents may no longer live here in Monticello, um, and. To me, you think of it at a broader basis, there were a lot of people that worked here in Monticello at this operations that have since moved out and, and. The government, they own it, they need to own it. And so wherever those individuals live, um, we can reimburse those.
Is there a? A um. Communication with people? So that maybe the word can get out somehow? Is there any brochures that are sent out or?
We will have to develop all that.
Try and come up with something like that.
Yeah, we'll have to develop all of that. And part of these funds goes towards the administration and marketing of it. I think. You know, as we look at, we just received a cancer screening report from the state of Utah. Uh, and their, their report and their studies come back and kind of. Noted that here in Monticello, um, the cancer rates really are no different than anywhere throughout the state of Utah. Or any other state.
You want to know why?
It was focused, a hundred percent of it was focused strictly on those residents in Monticello.
And the cancer screening is only for people who are living in Monticello right now.
Yes.
Does not take into consideration, somebody that lived here during the, the.
During that time.
Of the mill.
And moved.
And got cancer someplace else.
Wholeheartedly agree.
It's a false.
And so.
Report.
I commented back on that report likewise. I was like, hey, we've got, we've got members of the Navajo Nation that worked for this, that. They go to UNHS through their system and report cancer through that system. They're not, they're not reporting it through a Utah system and so. Where is the effort to link all of these together and, and really find out the effects of this, this site? Um, and, and I pointed out again, I was like, no matter what. Even if there's one, one individual that has cancer, the government owns it. This is a government operation. Own it. Own it forever. And, and so, so the study, hopefully we can get them to acknowledge that in the study and. Not discontinue future studies, uh, but to continue the studies, but broaden their sample set. So that it's a more inclusive of former residents that used to work here as well.
Well, that's another example of the state. Who um, keeps track of cancers. In the state of Utah, but they can't see over the mountain in Utah County to see what's actually going on in San Juan County.
Yeah.
So we get an inaccurate report because they're not willing to adjust. The way they track those cancers and we've, we've brought it up to them for ten or fifteen years and they still. Change their, their method at all. So it's underreported.
Yes.
In San Juan County.
Yep. That's too bad.
Anyway.
Well, this uh, free recurring?
The, the. The fundings weren't reoccurring. We're going to try to see how long we can get this going, um. Try to keep it as ongoing as we can. I've got a meeting with the, the, the Federal Department of Human Services. To figure out how we make this last as long as we can. But the appropriation, five hundred and twenty thousand.
The ownership.
Forever. Should be forever.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep, it was.
The uh. Rica?
Yeah, yep, the Downwinders, same thing.
They have a public hearings, uh, I think they already had. Somewhere um, in Bluefield. Yeah. Either it's recently or. But we, we had uh, resolutions. It's important resolution to continue from.
Yeah.
Different chapters.
Yeah, yeah. Now that's a different set of funds. The Downwinder Fund is different from this. Um. We, we're going to try to, to keep these funds as long as possible and, and market it, market the program. And see if we can help out. There's been individuals that I've met here in the county. That have mentioned, hey, I'm aware of this free cancer screening. I need to go get tested and just haven't taken the time and so. We're going to be encouraging those individuals here that live locally that, that have not to at least. Participate in the free program, get tested.
It'd be nice if, if maybe. The Health Department had put an article in the newspaper announcing the, uh, the receiving of these funds and. And encouraging people to take advantage of it. I, I don't know. How, how else to really get the word out.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah. The other thing is that uh, the testing. The screening. Sometimes uh, Navajo Mountain, the rest that go to. Arizona agencies.
Yeah, yep.
To get screened.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and they can get reimbursed for that. You know, if it comes out of pocket.
Yeah. Okay, good. There you go. Good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With that, any further question? Be none, all those in favor say aye.
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 I also agree, opposed eh? Motion carries, three favors, zero opposed. Next is public, public hearing. Thirteen.
We need to go in public hearing.
You do need to make a motion.
We go into public hearing. Uh, to. Uh, consider a rezoning request.
Okay.
Second?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor are, enter in public here.
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
I also oppose eh? Motion carries, three favors, zero opposed. We are now at a public here.
Okay, this is a request for a rezon for Catherine Lemus, San Juan County, or San Juan Estates, Phase Three Lot Twenty Five. Go ahead, Scott, give us your presentation. I don't know if Catherine's here or not.
Yeah, I invited the applicant Catherine Lemus to, to either be here in person or join online. I'm not sure if she's here or not.
There was nothing that came in.
So. I'm not sure whether she's here or not, but um, so she, she requested to rezone her property in San Juan Estates subdivision. It's in Phase Three. It's, it's a single lot, one acre in size. Um, the property is currently in the Spanish Valley Residential District. Um, and she would, she requesting, she's requesting that it be rezoned to Spanish Valley Resident, from Spanish Valley Residential to Highway Flex. Um, the property is about a mile from the highway. It doesn't really make sense to, to be in highway, highway flex. Her, the, the reasoning for her request um, was that she wanted nightly rentals to be permitted on the property. Because of existing nightly rentals that are in, that are happening in her neighborhood. That have um, increased traffic and increased um. Use and parking on the street. Um, she's, so she, her, her solution, she was wanting to be able to. Get nightly rentals, rentals permitted for her property so that she, um, her, her intended request was to sell the property to. Someone who was going to run nightly rentals. Um, and she, she mentioned that she was able to get more money. If nightly rentals were permitted than if they were not. So it was, is an economic benefit. Um, this was discussed at a plan, a public hearing with the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission discussed several things. Um, she brings up some valid concerns because of the increase of nightly rentals in the subdivision. There is. Um, it's a desirable thing right now. The number of nightly rentals, especially in Spanish Valley is increasing. Um. There is a big market for nightly rentals down there that, and people want to stay in these type of. Settings where it's more of a residential setting, not necessarily on the highway. Um, so the market of, for nightly rentals is increasing down there for sure. So it brings up a concern, um, but ultimately the, the Planning Commission felt this was not the way that this. Um, should be handled, rezoned this way, um, with a spot zoning of one, um, one lot and ultimately they. Their recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners is to the, to deny the rezone request. Um, so. But it, it does bring up a good concern that perhaps there are areas we should consider. Um, permitting nightly rentals in residential type neighborhoods. Um, which may be something we discuss as, as we work on our new zoning in the future. Um, this may be. Something that we would possibly recommend, an, an area that it is allowed. And not just completely disallowed in residential areas, but maybe a mix that we could come to some sort of a. Um. A compromise on, so. That's basically all I had, unless you have any other questions for me. Um.
Sir, I don't know. I'm just gonna say you can take public comment on this because we're in a public hearing. If there's anybody. Looks like we got one hand raised.
Okay, just as a reminder, public comments will be three minutes.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. My name's Ed Williamson. I'm at Seventeen North McLean Lane, right across the street from. This gentleman here. Uh, yeah, you guys really approved my, uh, property prices, you know, that's really good. The main thing is, is the rentals. You know, I'm a senior citizen. My wife has cancer. People up above me, there's people that have cancer, children. You gentlemen have children. You know, it's a good thing, but they need to do something with the rentals. I'm taking this time to say that there's, there's too much. You know, I, I understand they're coming. There's nothing I can do about it, nothing you can do about it. They're coming. One day they'll come to your town. And it's, it's a madhouse up there. You ought to come up one weekend and see what it's like. You cannot go out in the yard and walk your dog without. Somebody ripping by you on a motorcycle or an ATV. You know, I used to stand up on the street corner and yell at them, throw rocks at them. I'm tired of it. You know, I'm coming to you guys. Maybe you can help me. I'm at my wit's end, you know? I've worked all my life. I worked for corn constru-, or corn construction, a grand Johnson. I've worked in your town. I know how your streets are. I know how your communities are. They're great. Do it down there with us, please. You know, I'd really like to see that. Uh, you know, it's, like I say, they're coming. There's nothing I can do, but maybe you guys can hold a little restrictions against them, you know? Our water bill, my water bill is outrageous, but theirs is twenty dollars or ten dollars more than mine. But they have fifteen people. I have two. You know, it's, uh, somebody needs to look at this a little bit better, see what's going on. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Any other members of the audience wishing to make a public comment on this? We do have an individual online who's raised her hand. Bunny, I can see you there. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Got you, yes.
Okay, thank you. No, I'm, I did not, gentleman's name is just spoke. I could not agree with him more. I do not, I do not. Support a spot rezon. And it's def- it's definitely against the Spanish Valley area plan. And it, it, uh, the highway flex zone is too far from the highway flex zone. And it's just not the way to handle the problem. Uh, in terms of property value and selling to someone who wants to. Uh, do nightly rentals, that's just against the, uh, Spanish Valley ordinance. Is for the residential zone. I live in the residential zone in Spanish Valley. Uh, I have the same problems that gentleman said, uh, said that he has. The noise and the rudeness, the, the, the water bills that are, uh, not evenly. I felt and the, still the continuance of more illegal nightly rentals starting up all the time. What we need is enforcement, Commissioner. I, I have the right to live in my neighborhood that I bought my house in a residential neighborhood. I did not buy property that I felt was going to be in the middle of a. Commercial zone of nightly rentals. I'm highly against any new nightly rentals happening. Again, we need enforcement. And I'm totally against doing any compromise in terms of letting nightly rentals be in. You already grandfathered in a lot of rental when the new ordinance was passed. Now, it's just the way it is with zoning. Some people who started early, they, they are quote the winners. I guess everybody else is the losers. And, and especially in terms of our quality of life. I mean, the ordinance is, are wonderful. They're set in place to promote a quiet life in our residential zones. And I think we need enforcement here. Now, Mr. Burton is in charge of enforcement. He lives in Monticello. From everything I've heard, we don't have any enforcement. We need. An enforcement, a code enforcement officer. Not just for this, but for a lot of the other things too, the light, the, the light ordinance. So please do not approve this spot zoning. Now, I have two suggestions that would help with the noise issues. Well, that's actually one suggestion. Two, one is signage on our streets in our neighborhood. Well, please let me finish.
Sorry, thanks. Unless Commissioner Graz, do you want her to finish? We only allowed two minutes. Or three minutes. Thirty more seconds.
Thank you. I, I would like the Road Department to post no street parking signs in our residential neighborhood. Because it's not allowed. I would also like the Road Department to post speed limit signs. And I'm not sure what the county code is in terms of speed limits in residential areas, but I'm sure there is one. We don't have sign one here. Please do that much. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else online wishing to make a public comment? Go ahead and unmute yourself. Not seeing any others, commissioners.
I make a motion to come out of public hearing.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye also, opposed nay. Three favors, zero opposed. Motion cares. We're back on the. Direct to the room.
So item thirteen.
We're still on item thirteen, right?
Correct.
Um, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I was, um, I was to, um, make a motion, uh, to table this item.
I make a substitute motion.
Substitute motion.
I make a motion, we deny the request.
Is there a second? We need one more person.
You second it?
I'll second the, uh, denial. As recommended. So the. Motion, Mr. Very Boy May fail. No second. Mr. Adams, motion to deny. Second by myself. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed nay. There be none, three favors, zero opposed. Motion carries.
Thanks for your comment.
Okay, the next item under community reinvestment area, we would have you.
Hey, if you come in here, you can't leave early.
We're gonna have you convene as the community reinvestment area, but my recommendation is. We'll just table this item for further review.
You need a motion. Motion, we table item fourteen.
Second.
Table motion made by Mr. Adams, ta-, uh, second by Mr. Very Boy. All those in favor say aye.
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 I also oppose nay. Zero, motion cares. Thank you.
And next you have commission reports.
Reports. Anyone? Mr. Adams.
Last. Tuesday or Wednesday, I can't remember. The state, um. Water people came down and held a public hearing at the, at the hideout. And, um. I attended that. I invited a couple of the city councilmen from Monticello to attend with me. And, um. Anne Lepinon from Bluff was there and a couple of other people, but. They had, um, two officials from the Navajo Nation. That were there to speak about the water settlement. Um, uh, eighty-one thousand acre feet of the San Juan River. And they also were, were there to speak about water allocations that the state. Had made and the need for adjustments. Uh, because. The state of Utah apparently has over allocated. Water in the Colorado River Basin. For a number of years and. With Lake Powell drying up and. The water disappearing fast all over the state of Utah. They felt like they needed to have this meeting and. The two ladies from Navajo Nation were very. Very, uh, well educated on the, the water settlement going to the Utah Navajos. Out of the San Juan River and. Um, I expressed to them from a county standpoint. We'd worked hard for a number of years to get water to every resident. In San Juan County that lives on the reservation. And I suggested that, that that be a priority. That they set in this water settlement was to make sure that. Every home on the reservation had access to clean drinking water. They assured me that that was. Uh, uh, the priority that they were, that they were working on. With the Navajo Nation. They also held a, a hearing in Blanding. And I'm not positive they might have held one in Bluff. Uh, but it was interesting. I, I talked to him. About the allocation for the city of Monticello and Spring Creek. Purchasing water rights in Spring Creek and speaking to the new water engineer and. What's the water guy that represents our area?
Mark Stilson?
Mark Stilson. Speaking to Mark, he said. That they had to do a chain of title. On the water rights that the city had purchased. And they could not certify those water rights until that chain of title had been completed. He said Brad, Brad Bunker submitted to them a. A chain of title scenario several months ago, but it was sitting on. The title people's desk in Salt Lake. Just another example of. People in Salt Lake can't see over the mountain, see what's going on in southern Utah. And so I asked the water engineer. If she would please make it a priority. Uh, for the title people in the water division. To start working on that as soon as possible. My concern was. That the city had received an allocation of money, a grant and a loan from CIB, but if they didn't act on that. In a reasonable time, the CIB may. May say, well, we're gonna have to put this back in. To our system so that we can get the money out working, not just have it sit there and be promised for years and years. So, uh, Mark also indicated that there was one other. Uh. Report that Brad Bunker needed to submit on behalf of the city to the state engineer's office. And I don't know whether it was a different set of water rights or it was included in the same. I couldn't. I really couldn't understand exactly what they needed, but. Just to make everybody aware that. That the state isn't moving on that. And I think Kim and. Ron were gonna go back and ask the city to write a letter to the State Division. Of water, asking them to prioritize. This purchase of water rights by the city of Monticello. And, and see if they could get the title people. To make that a priority and, and get it done. Um. They talked a lot about. You know, water throughout the state and throughout the county. And, um. They were, they were trying to get some input. From people here and I think, I don't know what happened in the other two meetings, but. Hopefully they. Heard us, you know, and, and the, in the county and in the city of Monticello. As we kind of. Let them know kind of what our priorities were and, and, um. You know, that, the water conservancy district for the county. Has twenty, I think twenty-two thousand acre feet in the San Juan River. And that water can be, uh, point of diversion can be changed. Um, pretty easy. If there's a place where. We want to divert water. And use some of those water rights so we don't lose them. And I'm still wondering if, um. You know, if maybe the city of Monticello or Blanding or whatever want to. Want to work on a reservoir or something so we can divert some of that water. Um, in the near future. I understand the city of Monticello is working with USDA. On a water application. Or development of the Spring Creek water somehow, but. Um, I just think we need to really be conscientious of water throughout the county. And the development of water because. Water is kind of a use it or lose it proposition. If you get a water right. And you don't use it. After a certain period of time, I think you're in jeopardy of losing it. But it was a. It was a good meeting and, um. They, they were grateful to have some, a few people show up. I don't know how well of us advertised Mac, do you?
So they advertise it and I think part of it too is they had, where they had it in Blanding, they had it in, I think, I can't remember if they had it in Bluff. But they also had it down in Aneth and Monument Valley. And so, yeah, so we, my whole emphasis is make sure you, you have it throughout the entire county. Not just Monticello and they, they heard that. So they, they reached out to the chapters and, and had those meetings down south as well for that. And so. It was spread out that two days. So I talked to Mark yesterday on it. He mentioned that it was, it was, there were people that were in attendance. He, he didn't think. Because this is more procedure, you know, that a lot of people would come out in general. Um, but he, he mentioned that people did come out at all of those meetings that they held.
They didn't?
They did. They had attendance at all of them. And so it wasn't a packed house. Um, but there were people that attended.
Okay, and then, uh, let's see, this week tomorrow I'm going to Salt Lake for a CIB meeting Thursday morning. So I'll go up tomorrow because it starts at eight. And then come back tomorrow after the, the meeting, um. I don't know if Willie, you've got any of this stuff on your calendar, but let me look at my April calendar and make sure. Um, you might want to know that the GOP San Juan County Convention is on the fourteenth. If you want to come and talk to the Republicans and see if they want to vote for you. Um, let's see. There's a state joint highway committee meeting in Saint George on the twenty-second. Friday the twenty-second starts at one o'clock. Uh, on the twenty-sixth is the UAC Management Conference in Ogden at the Echols Center. Twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth. And those are the ones that I have on my calendar for April. That's my report.
UAC is twenty-seventh?
Twenty-sixth.
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 Twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth in Ogden. If you want to go to that, Anne Marie can get you scheduled for that. You're going, aren't you?
I am, I'm signed up on that one. That one is where they review.
Joint meeting, highway?
The joint highway meeting is
Twenty-second?
Twenty-second in Saint George. It's at the Dixie Convention Center, starts at one o'clock. I need a reservation. No, not right now.
I know, I need these papers.
Okay. For the, for the, well, maybe not, Anne Marie. But it starts at one.
Joint meeting?
Maybe I won't stay overnight.
Who's all participant?
I may not stay overnight. Because it doesn't start till one and I think I can drive home afterwards. I have to get permission from my wife, but I'll check.
You always do.
Yeah.
She doesn't like me driving at night.
You can't pass the door without her.
Okay.
That's right. That's right. All right, that's mine.
Kenneth, do you have any report?
I will still be around, um. Last week, two weeks, I've been delivering pellets to the elders that have pellet stove. Uh, pellets, not hay. So that kept me busy and, um, I might be doing the same thing again. So other than that, uh, I have a couple of trick, uh, trips that might be set as, if, if we come up with a date to go to Winderock to meet with the Resources Committee. And also the Education Committee on some matters that has to do with the legislation that the Navajo Nation is working on. So, uh, pretty much I'll be, I'll be in the county and, and continue to, uh, look at the roads. Been out to, uh, Yellow Rock Point. And still, we have graders running all over the place, but they're not doing anything and the roads are really bad. Uh, Hatch, we told the, uh, NDOT to block off some areas, but I just barely got a text now saying that it's a state road. So, uh, I'll be busy taking care of those things and getting ready for the, uh, for the veteran celebration as well. So other than that, um, I'll be around and, um, thank you very much.
Well, um, mine is, uh, I went down to Phoenix on seventeenth. And, uh, on the eighteenth, I attended the Broadband Initiative, uh, on that. So with different, um, agency. And, uh, two ladies came down from the State of Utah Broadband Director. And also with the, uh, one with the, uh, highway. Uh, regarding Broadband, how they need to, I guess, consider right away. So. And I was lucky enough to be there and Mr. BIE. Forget his name.
He was there.
My
Yeah.
Mahoney or Mahoja? Mahoja, I think. Uh, he and the two ladies brought them together talking about the right of way from Ojito all the way into Navajo Mountains. So I was, uh, it was a success. They were talking. Again to talk. And, um, area, Navajo area director said, if there's any problem, just give me a call. So gave them the number. So that's hopefully clear the, the way and right of way issues. And, uh, where I attended chapter meetings of almost all planted meetings, regular chapter meetings, planted meetings, regular chapter meeting. So I had to include those, uh, uh, and give them an update of my report. And then on the thirtieth, um, thirtieth, I traveled to Richfield and attended the, uh, State of Utah Health Board Conference. Very interesting. Uh, I tried to bring out some of the issues that we face on the Navajo Nation, San Juan County. But, uh, they seem to be like sort of similar to not oversee the over the mountain. They have already conditioned themselves to uh, determine or consider, uh, issues that are related to urban areas and metropolitan, not the remote areas. They seem to say, the heck with you guys. And that, and this could, it, it just seems that way, but interesting. And, uh, went to another two-day session, uh, on, uh, what did they call it? Uh, funding or grant monies that are coming through um, ARPA. And, uh, the, the, the attorneys, uh, and also the, uh, uh, the experts. They translated some of these landowners and what to do, what not to do. If you do not do according to what is set in the regulation, you can probably be slapped with a, some type of, uh, misuse of federal dollars. I don't know. They should say if it's a grant money, there is no stipulation to misuse of, uh, or something like that.
And put it in their pocket.
But, uh, yeah. Same to I. Anyway, um, that's what I had, uh, for, um, for the week and, uh, for the month of March and then now April. Have a chapter meeting coming up on the ninth. And today I was supposed to be, uh, at a podcast.
You'll still be there today, it'll just be later.
Okay. It's down in Bluff, I think. And, uh, there was a schedule, I missed that, uh, water settlement. I know, I, I don't remember the time. But I didn't see any reservation chapters. But apparently they finally saw over the mountain.
Yeah, that's exactly, yeah.
Anyway, the, the, I missed, uh, April first, um, public hearing on the RICA uh, over in Bloomfield. Couldn't go over there because I was in Richfield. Next, uh, we have a, uh, what is it? Uh, Broadband uh, maiden again on the thirteenth. I'd be down the road in Blanding at the, uh, Trust Navo, Utah Navajo Trust One Office. And fourteenth is Seven County Infrastructure. They're gonna have interview for new director uh, on the thirteenth. But I'm gonna be over here. I told them I'll be over here, but next day I'll be over in, in Price. Um, Utah, the Navy Care Celebration, the tenth here, I believe it is, gonna be in Bluff on Saturday, the sixteenth.
Easter weekend.
Yeah, and so that's my schedule, my report. The question I have is, uh, the, when you say, uh, the water settlement agreement and those water permits that were already approved by the state water, water board. Does that mean that decreasing the amount that has already been agreed to in certain cases? Or increased?
My understanding was that any wells that had not been drilled that were approved would come out of the settlement of the eighty-one thousand.
And given to
Whoever drilled the well on the reservation. The residents who, who've drilled the wells, they'll have the, the right for enough water for their house, their livestock.
The way I understand is that the, uh, they're gonna run a pipeline from Shiprock just as they did with the, uh, uh, Gallup Water Transmission Line. Run it to, uh, from Shiprock to Pitalabato, Tisus Pass and Red Mesa. So.
Wow.
And all the, the other one is from, uh, Achitra into, uh, a pipeline into Ojito.
I imagine they need to on that.
Yeah. So that's gonna be, uh, I don't know, it depends on how many acres of land uh, the water distribution per chapter. You gotta have a plan, I guess.
I think the first, first thing, according to the ladies from Navajo Nation, was to provide water for households. Not so much irrigation or secondary water. It's, it's providing water to each household on the reservation.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we don't receive those types of information.
Yeah.
And, uh, on the other hand, uh, the local land users or, yeah, just say, okay, you put a plan together, I'll, I'll just receive the water. Doesn't say how little or how mu, how, how much
Projects.
it will be. But if the, the, that's why I put together that, um, ESI, Environmental Impact Study to include water line all the way up to the top, now want to run water line, pipeline from, uh, San Juan River, pump it up. I don't know how many station it'll take, maybe a couple to take it to the top from three thousand to six thousand feet. So that's my intention and I've been trying to educate uh, the public. So that's my report. If
Can we make a motion we adjourn?
Is a motion made to adjourn?
Second.
We gotta enter into a motion to
Oh.
go into executive session.
Executive session.
Hold the adjournment.
And I think Wyman also found out some information on your, the money that you looked at on the
It was an inmate who was flown out and that was the bill uh, that Classic Air gave to us. We will submit that to the state of Utah and be reimbursed for it. So it was a reinsurance case.
Eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Yep. I, I agree with that because one time I had one guy flown from Page, Arizona to
Navajo.
to, uh, Phoenix in emergency. It's sixty thousand dollars.
My goodness.
So we will get reimbursed for that.
Yes.
Okay, do we need to go back and approve that, Mac? Because we pulled it out.
He did, yeah, yeah, just make a motion approving all check registers.
Read, read, read stated.
I'll make a motion we approve all items on the check register that were presented today.
Amending the motion?
Yep.
Mr. Adams, uh, the session table over through the item, uh, Table or withdrew the item uh regarding the. The budget or the expenditure.
Yeah, so.
And check register. Anyway, that's what uh he withdrew from the item listing, so. That was carried, uh I believe uh. I seconded it and uh. We pass it now, he wants to uh go ahead and restate that. So the justification was uh provided by Mister Lang. So with that. Do I hear a second?
Which item is that?
Uh under check register where it says. Eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. San Juan County Sheriff Expenditure.
Okay, second.
Okay. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye also. Oppose nay. Three in favor, zero opposed. Read state in that item. Now I need a motion to approve it.
No, we approved it.
That's read state.
Okay, motion to approve.
Motion made by Mister Adams to approve. Is there a motion to second?
Which item is that?
Same one.
Number two, same thing.
Oh, okay.
The check registers.
Second by Mister Berry Boy. No questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye also. Oppose nay. Read favors zero oppose.
Make a motion, we go into executive session?
Let's do it.
Kenneth, second the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.